All right, I'd like to call to order the Board of Adjustment meeting for tonight. Uh, if I could get roll call.
Dave Ballman.
Travis Scherz. Ben Wilson.
Brian Sinan.
Call President Cowan up for it. Uh, can we stand for a call of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order is approval of minutes from uh seven eighteen twenty-three meeting.
Yeah, that looks good.
Can we get a motion for approval on the promotion?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All right.
No minutes passed, approved. All right, we'll move on to new business. Um, four and eighteen Johnson Avenue. Um. Brian and Crystal.
Serna.
Serna. Okay. Can you just kind of just explain what you want to do or what you're trying to achieve?
We would like to widen our driveway onto the property line and stay along the side of the garage and put. Mark.
Can you zoom out of this now a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, just hold down if it seems to be back here.
Like to the neighbors across the street, we basically mimic them.
Across the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of what they did, but to continue with along the side of the house.
Into the bathroom.
We have a patio behind our house, you know, the store.
This one?
It's all, yeah.
So we want to look at the back.
You're right, you're doing it.
Right here?
You're up down. Down, right there.
It's covered in snow still.
That's what I said.
What they did, but go into our backyard and. Like we currently have a fence by property line around our whole property. We want to etch concrete up to the fence. To curb. But no, they have it in the mansion houses.
Because their, their curb still, that's the house that still has the curb there and then the concrete is up to the top of the curb.
No, their curb is cut out on that one.
It's right where the concrete is.
Okay.
East then.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so does the house next to them have the same thing?
There's two, two houses down.
Okay.
Same thing. Curious to know if another one that had us.
Well, when I drove up there, there's two that got the curbs cut out and then there's one that's got the concrete actually poured.
That's probably our.
Up behind the curb. Um.
Our neighbor has like the V in the front yard. Like they didn't take out the curb with all our neighbors, but.
So. You're on the first turn, right?
Yep, on jump.
Yep, on the curb, by down by the, where it starts to curb, right?
Before.
Just before.
Yeah, just before. So a house farther to the west of you is the one that's got the side in front, it was in front of their house poured out onto the. On top level with the curb. Okay, so with that being said, in the records of the city, they have no permits filed with the city to have those approaches like that. Which is required. So I don't know how long they've had them.
This one was there within seven years ago.
Yeah, so.
Want to cross through?
Yeah.
I thought they were putting a wooden.
So. So since two thousand and ten is when the book was revised. Before that, I don't know what they had. I just got that book. Um, they would add have a permit to do that. And there's no permits on file to even be approved to put that concrete in like that. Uh, now I do know that with. The variance request, it says that what anybody else has prior to what you're doing doesn't. You can't take that and that's not considered part of the reason to get a variance. So if that's said so far, does anybody have any questions else?
My biggest question was the, to go back to like properties that you guys were trying to, if we talked about this at one point too, to see if. To see if that was even done correctly in the first place or when it was done in the first place. I don't know when they were put in or how it was put in. So. That was my biggest question was to see exactly, did they get variance support or were those variance?
There's nothing in the line.
Right.
So.
That's, yeah, can we talk a little bit about that? You said it didn't give us much to go off of as far as going forward. Obviously it exists there. Um. Yeah, that was my biggest question.
Honestly, the only reason we weren't go all the way to the street is just to match that. It looks nice. We're goofy if you have that on one side of the street. Ours is kind of big curb there where we put the side of this.
Well. I do know that if that street gets redone with the city's projects, theirs won't look like that. Because it doesn't meet the requirements. So if the city were to come in and redo that street for improvements, their approaches would be the width of their garages. They won't be allowed to have that back there because it's not up to code. It's not up to ordinances. I mean, deal with that all the time unfortunately, but that's part of a, like you said, there's no permit, there's no variance on file. Um. It wouldn't be allowed to be put back.
So I know our neighbor to the west of us has the little vehicles driveway with the V. And I think we'd be okay if we do something like that. We would prefer to do it this way.
So where, so where the red line is.
Yep.
That's give or take the, the easement, the right of way line in the front property. Your angle would have to start at that point of that. You guys don't have sidewalks up there. Yeah, to the other side. So.
That's not where they are now.
What's that?
The angles aren't there now where they're in the line. They don't start there now.
Same thing, what they have now can't be put back. So if the city comes in and redoes that street. That red line, give or take a little bit because it's a map, is the city right away.
If you look at the house right next to us, you can see the front of their car and you can see where they.
It's, it's off a little bit there, so, so.
Five, five feet either.
That red line could be off a little bit.
He did that as he's a, well.
Well, realistically, couldn't they, because your driveway is in line with your door, not your entire.
Yeah, you, you come over here.
Well, on our picture, it's hard to tell. Is your, is your driveway approach right now the same with, does it come straight out from there? So you could, so, yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to zoom in or anything?
No, that's good. So like our garage is twenty-four feet.
Yep.
But if we do it the way we proposed to do it, it would be twenty-nine feet from here to there.
Yeah.
So we're, we're over the twenty bucks, was it twenty-four feet, what I said? So if we made this twenty-four feet here. Then would we straighten the lines?
Not necessarily. So is the draw, is the driveway on the, this is west, right?
Definitely.
Yep. Is your, your driveway straight out from where the garage meets the house on the west side?
No, no.
It's.
Driveway, driveway comes here, the garage was in, it's doorway.
So.
One of those little tiny doors.
So that's considered part of the garage. So your twenty-four foot would start.
Garage is from here.
Yep.
To here.
Yep, that's.
Twenty-four feet from here to the here.
No, the, the outside would have to be straight line with the curb coming.
So we had to put concrete on a whole set for.
To widen out the whole driveway to match the front of the garage.
Essentially, the front of the garage is your guy.
So if you took a string line and put it down the east wall of your garage, that's where that side would have to be. And now that's not calling that tape. That taper can go off farther. It's the, at the top of the, where the curb's risen up there. So basically, yeah, so. Your taper starts here and out. So this could come straight off this edge, straight out, and they can have your taper. But at this point, right here where the sidewalk would be, is where you have to be straight line with the garage and that's your starting approach.
In towards your house, you can pick it out if you want.
So we could come out here and we can move it back a little bit.
Yeah. And then you start the taper wherever that, so.
Kind of like they did here.
So the only problem with that is. Cause there's no sidewalk, the taper can't be where the sidewalk would be if we have.
They're not going to be inside.
Um.
Some data, but.
Yeah.
But I've allowed that for a D.
You allow that.
I let it go for D into the right of way and then from that part. So if they had put a sidewalk there.
They just thought.
They looked at the paper there.
Yep.
And then it would go from where.
So your taper could start based on what you just said, would start at that seam where the approach happens.
Well, honestly, the approach isn't really a deal breaker for us. Where do you allow us to move it to? Or whether we will move it to?
Yeah, so if you.
Deal breaker is the property. Can we put concrete up to property? You don't do that, we can't park anything next to the house because it's only six feet wide. We need that extra two feet. That's, that's our.
And like, we already have the fence on our property line. So if we pour concrete six feet and our fence is eight feet, then we have two feet of grass where our fence line and the concrete don't.
With, with that being said, when I look at that. We just had somebody that wants to do the same thing and we told them, no, there's a difference though between, between um. Yours and theirs is their garages were back to back. So if they went down the property line and their neighbor went down the property line, then it would be literally concrete from this side of their garage to this side of the other neighbor's garage. With their garage being on the other side of the house, that's not going to happen.
There's no utilities running through there, is there?
It, whether there's a, the only thing that would be back there would be a phone line. I don't know why it was.
No, that's. We actually.
Okay, so there's nothing.
Gas line that goes underneath all of them.
Which goes underneath all the driveways as it is and so.
And the neighbor service that comes off that beam is on there.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be over that.
So with that being said, with not having concrete go from. That full width because the yards there, I would not be opposed myself to not allowing them to go to the lot line in this situation.
What is your neighbor saying?
Thank you.
Um, they, they said that uh Kent, Kent.
Right directly.
Right there. Uh, have approved this request, so. I mean, in, in this situation, going to the property line isn't going to have a parking lot someday in the future, you know, with concrete from one side to the other side.
Yeah, but we can only have a six feet wide. It's not usable, probably.
No.
It's a expensive amount of money for.
Right.
For not getting anyone to be a proper house there. Yeah, I mean, it's not like you're going to, I mean, with old rain, your garage with that width, you're not going to fit a camper or nothing in there anyway. You're, you're, you're for a car.
Oh, there's, that's already.
Yeah, there's already a fence there too, so.
So, and neighbors okay with it.
Yeah.
I mean, when the driveways are put together, then there is a snore in the building.
There's.
There's, there's other issues that are not considered.
And that's not if you're talking about the utilities that are in beneath.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, yeah, they had a primary power there.
It was a.
Trans.
Wild variables for everything else. Yeah.
It sounds good to me. People that, I mean, we just need to know exactly what we're allowed to be with the entrance there, so.
Yeah, and we talked a little bit in the P and Z before this too, we need to revise what you're actually with, you're allowed to be. It should be allowed from whatever the front face of your garage is. Right now it's just road is thirty feet, not like see forty feet. You're running on much more other than that. That's, that's old, fifteen years old.
It would be twenty nine feet. Yeah, if you went all the way, it'd be twenty nine feet.
Yeah, so.
But I can't exceed the.
With, so.
Put them at the house.
Based on engineering practices, it should be straight line with the garage. Shouldn't be able to go any wider than that.
I understand.
Your entrance shouldn't be any wider.
Do you know where your property are? Or what do your property pins are? Do you know where they are approximately? Okay, but then I'm pretty sure to see if you get back fence at the different corner of your property, you should hide it with your neighbors and stuff. I mean, to then you just figure out your distance to your public, why your pot is. I know that when we put our fence in, it was supposed to be on the garden, okay? It'd be a stage to go down, you get where your property line is and then you put the four feet for a sidewalk there. That'll make it easier to figure out how far you go towards the curb line.
It, is what he's asking is, is if you know where your two front property pins are, not, not the sides.
Did our fence, and I'm sure I can find it and figure it out.
Because is what he's basically saying, that it's from that property line to measure four foot towards the street. And that's where the point can start for your taper.
And they're not able to through on the east side of your garage, the straight line out to your, the curb line that you want to go. They'll probably tie it thirty nine when you're supposed to pay to probably there.
And if, and if you don't want to widen your driveway approach, you don't have to, to do this. But, so. So. Yep.
Then we would start like, just like they did here when they started that crack, they started their angle back.
Yeah.
But see, they weren't always on the street, so like, hustles, they didn't, so there is a tier for yours to be, that you'd go from.
Or I could go way up there.
Yeah, that's my, that's what we get. No, no, so your, your four foot sidewalk would be like right here, so that that would be your aim.
Can we still do the style? Do we have to have this big curb?
No, you're going the wrong way. I mean, the, the point has to start at where the sidewalk would start going back so that we don't get the whole boulevard filled with concrete.
On the back side of the sidewalk.
On the back side.
No, I was, I've been doing it from the street side, from the.
From the street side of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
But, so.
That I've been going to be the cut out of approach, because you, I mean.
Well, it should, well, then, no, you're going right here like they are. Right here would be the side of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
This is your angle point back. And because then if they put sidewalk in that little point, it's cut off.
So like sidewalk off.
Yes.
And then from there you go off. Figure out is how I've been doing with everybody else.
So you, so you've been going the angle in the.
End of, in the.
Ball.
But that's the angle, and that's what we've been doing on everything else, because so then it's a easier cut in for people to go in, to go.
Okay.
I mean, if you're trying to back something and pull something, then you don't have to go in and end that over. I've been allowing it to be just a straight in a round and pull something. That's what I've been doing on other properties.
Well, their curbs differ than most curbs though. So them are rollback curbs where you're doing that on. These are straight drop curbs. That doesn't, I mean, so they have to hop a curb to do that here. That doesn't.
Yeah, I mean, but if they cut it off, they probably round.
Well, if they cut it out.
Cut, fill it or whatever you want. There's. Round out, so then it would be. There wouldn't be a ninety degree angle there.
I don't know how I'm going to relate this to our content.
Chuck it.
But that's, that's what I've done on everybody else is from the cutout, the point wherever it is, they, they can go to their property line or wherever they're. And then it'll take them a little bit more. That's where I was seeing bases, wasn't done like that, but everything else since then, in prior two bases was that angle from that perfect out.
Okay, so you, you go out farther, so we thought.
I was thinking it was the backside of the.
We were, we were thought sidewalk, the, the property lines where the angle starts.
Oh.
Like they do in Sioux Falls and all the other communities.
So the boulevard is a hundred percent grass, though, if, if there's a sidewalk there, though. And the, the driveway is the angle I've been aiming from the cutout to that point because it's. Probably what. Surgeons were using from cutout depending that you're going to keep over. It's not a lot, but you still have, yeah, you have that green space over here, but. So that adds to the transition for people to go in and out. It's a lot easier.
But so even with that printout that you did, um, about the Sioux Falls thing, that technically makes the driveway in front full width. So the point of the angle starting at the back of the sidewalk is so that it angles back because you're not supposed to be able to park. More vehicles in your driveway at that point than the width of the garage. You're supposed to have that vehicle, that parking pad's supposed to be fine.
Yeah, but what I understand is for a little bit of there, you should be able to park being around a sidewalk, which is a big old parking sign. Blocking traffic, but there's no sidewalk over there. That's the hard part. This is off there, it's sidewalks. But anywhere else, you can.
Okay, I just need to go for.
So we've identified now. Where we want him to start the taper and then going forward, that's what everything will be based on for variances to put these in. Um. So. Or do we want to do it, do we want to start at the sidewalk like we were talking?
I, he's.
I mean, technically, the, you know, if we say the approach can't be wider than the garage, the approach starts at the sidewalk to the street. So if we allow the taper to be in the boulevard, technically the approach is wider.
Yeah, that's creating a problem. Well, your approach is, your cutout is what it is. Those, I mean, you do it on a property, you can go there.
Oh, the, the, the.
The floor is dividing this cutout.
But the approach is technically the width at the sidewalk. That's your approach. The tapers on side for most cutout.
Tapers, I mean, the tapers are. Out, but then they're at an angle, so there is really.
But you're starting at that point where they cut out for that taper is where it's, so that's technically not, so that's the taper for the approach. The approach is the width at the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So.
You'd have to start the taper on the outside of the side.
Well, so if we want to allow it so that it's a little bit wider at the sidewalk, it goes on a break, I would say when they don't have, have sidewalks, start at the approach line.
Yeah.
Taper from there back at a forty-five degree angle. And then you have a variance for forming up to the property line. And then if we just keep that going forward, everything will be the same from here on out for everything because, like I said, I mean. Every street gets redone at some point in town by the city. I mean, it's, I mean, that's cast iron pipe up there, yeah. In on Johnson, I thought that was cast iron.
That's A C.
Okay, so anyways, that pipe will be replaced here. Sooner than later. So I mean, when we come in and depending on funding and whatnot, that's presented, sidewalks may have to go in. Depending on funding to get up.
It was talked about putting it on L M A, but the cost came in, I don't agree.
But now things have gotten more stringent on that, so it's harder to remove sidewalks. Now there's, as soon as your town has a certain population, you have to put sidewalks in on every street. Our town's not to that point yet. So. That's a different, different deal, so.
I mean, if we have to put sidewalks in in ten years. It's just.
That's what I'm saying. So if we start at that point, basically that, that corner would be cut off and then the sidewalk would be there and then you'd have a little wider spot so it doesn't crack and stuff and then go back at your taper. So that's where I would say. I would say that. We should make a standard that if there's no sidewalk, the taper can start, the point of the taper can start at the approach, where the approach meets the driveway. Taper back at a forty-five degree angle. And in this case here, we're going to give them a variance if we make a motion for that to go through their lot line because of the width and the, there's no driveway on the other side. Make a wide concrete path.
Yeah, if you, if that's the, trying and both things, that's a solid practice to. To do here going forward. You're kind of second pressing here, so.
Basically.
Look at.
We do those only book, we're gonna put those presences in there so that they're standard from here on out.
Do you think that's an acceptable way to do it? Let's find it.
Based on common in practices with other communities, yes.
Okay.
We can go further out in our driveway.
So where, where the joint from the approach to.
Draw it on this. Exactly, and then what I'm looking at is, it is different for upper ball kites because those are straight cuts. So that is easier from there. They're not, they're, they don't have approach.
Yeah.
So there's a can go straight from that, where this is, when you do look at that round out, if you cut it about a half where it should be, but if there is no clean edge, cut. That's, that's of our purpose. When you turn around, you have to go right here, it's a straight edge, but.
How many?
Round, round, but you wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, like what I, all the heights, you'd almost have to, I would draw a line straight up to here and then from that.
So basically, if you want to look here, so you can see your, your joint in the concrete from the approach of the driveway. So basically from that corner, forty-five degree angle up to your lot line and then back. And this, this might be off a little bit, I.
They could theoretically stretch that point out at the crack.
You can go out to the other side of the garage, right?
That's, yes.
Could come out.
Yes, technically you could start at that point here and have concrete like this and you could actually make this whole thing. All the way out wider that far.
Wherever you're.
Wherever this edge line is.
Do we have to have this big curve on there? Just move all that back or can we?
So, to be honest with you.
Straight out like the neighbor across the street did. That's probably why they did.
No, you can't, no.
We can't move the property.
We can't just.
No, but I'm not, I'm not saying out to the property line. I'm saying out to the edge of our garage.
Yeah, you take right out to the street.
Up to the street.
Yeah.
Can you move over to the other one? Back across, across the street. See, there, there's just come straight out and move right to the street, it's a square corner.
Yeah.
They don't have this whole bend.
Yes, because there's a new style.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely, yeah.
So if you go up in like Valley New and stuff.
Here's the edge of the garage. We can just come, this could come all the way out.
Straight, yeah.
Right to the road right there.
And then.
When we get to this point, we could curve.
Yeah, so and you can actually do this too. So a new driveway from here out, there's a two foot taper. Is what they put in for your approach. So they would knock this out, they put this concrete in with a two foot taper here and then.
The part where it slopes, yeah.
Where, because it slopes up to the top of the curb and then a two foot taper.
Okay.
Instead of.
So, but then we're pushing the curb back to there instead of the edge of the road.
Technically, this is curved.
Because it's still.
Because it's taped. So if you drive through Valley New Edition and you look at the driveways where the garage has come out and then you see there's that, that piece that comes up, slope.
Yeah.
It starts, that's what they got there also.
That's why water is running.
Yes, because it hits, because it runs down that taper point.
Yeah, right.
So, um, and then you could widen this side out to the garage too and put the same taper in over here too.
You're kind of messing with the.
That's.
Herb at the end is just going to.
You, you want to say that curb at the end would be redone.
Yeah.
Which, which would be done and no matter what you did anyways, that curb.
We're not going to mess with this. That doesn't make, doesn't gain us anything. We can't park on stack.
No.
Right.
So, so.
And it would just be spending much.
Right. Yeah, so this is, so you, yes, you could come straight out from the garage. Put your two foot taper in here, slope it up to the top of the curb. And then where this point is right.
Where the crack.
Here.
Yeah, where.
Where that, where that crack is, that's where your forty-five degree angle starts. And that's where this table would start too.
Okay. I'm good with that.
I mean. Not all can, can be.
Right.
Yeah.
If that's the way we have to do it.
All right, we're good.
So can we?
I'll do what I'm self.
Yeah, thank you. So need to get a motion to.
Uh, do you want, I want, because we're not, we're not really.
Is there anything about patio that we needed?
The patio, there, what's limit on the size? What, well. Fifty percent of your backyard, you don't have to have a variance to have that.
No, but that was on.
Well, but if we give them the variance to put the concrete, they're kind of covers that, so.
So.
You're going to want to. Word that in such a way, it's like you're going to recover your.
Um. So we're going to give them a variance. To put the concrete on the lot.
Right.
Okay, the taper is standard practice.
Right. Okay.
So the only thing they need a variance for is the concrete.
The rest will handle itself because it's already, it's already the way it has.
Because that's standard practice, so that's already good. So the only thing they need a variance for is to put the concrete up to the fence on the lot.
Okay.
Because the rest is going to be common practice.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve that. I'll make a motion to approve that variance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Meeting adjourned.